Well, good afternoon. Welcome to June the 12th, 2023 meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. I am Jeff Ramsey, Chairman of the Board. I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. We have much to be proud of in Gaston County Schools and so many reasons to share good news during our time with you. To my left is our Vice Chair, Dr. Cherry, and I'd like to ask Mr. Dedman.
Lee Dedden, Gastonia Township.
Josh Chris, Dallas Township.
Todd Kinlaw, South Point Township.
Dr. Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
AM Stevens, Riverbend Township.
Brent Moore, Crowthers Mountain Township.
Thank you. Our first order of business to have our prayer and pledge of allegiance to the flag. I would like to ask Dr. Booker to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please join me in prayer. Oh, holy God, we thank you for the completion of our school year and the safe, successful graduation ceremonies. We thank you for the start of our summer camps and for those who serve in the camps and for those who attend. It is our privilege and responsibility to support, foster, and advance the mission of Gaston County Schools. Be with us in our discussions tonight. Give us insight and courage to do your will with compassion and reverence as stewards and companions for the benefit of the entire Gaston community and beyond. Help us to know and believe in the gifts you have given us both individually and collectively. Inspire us to solve the challenges we may face and to take joy in shared triumphs. It is with faith and hope that we trust in your presence with us and your guidance. We thank you for who you are and all you are. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Booker. Our next order of business is adopt the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Second, Mr. Moore made a motion, second, Mr. Stevens. All in favor? That's good. Thank you. Unanimous. Before we get to our good news portion of our meeting, we'd like to take time to honor our superintendent. This is Dr. Booker's last meeting, and we want to bring attention to some of the most important achievements during his tenure with Gaston County Schools. Dr. Booker informed the Board in April of his intention to complete his service as superintendent at the conclusion of the school year. And now, this is time to come for us to recognize Dr. Booker. Extend our best wishes to him as he pursues a new career or opportunity. Before we share about Dr. Booker, there are a number of former Board members with us this evening, and I'd like to thank them for being here and like to recognize them. We have the Honorable Judge David Phillips, please stand. The Honorable Judge Justin Davis. Mr. Mark Upchurch. And our past Chairman, Mr. Kevin Collier, our past Chairman. And I see a couple other faces there. Our past Superintendent Reece McGlowen. And our Secretary Honore Stevens. Thank you again for being here. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Hagens, Dr. Hagens, Todd Hagens to come forward to highlight Dr. Booker's time.
I'll take it, Mr. Ranger.
I know. I went to.
Thank you, Chairman Ramsey and members of the Board of Education, for giving me an opportunity to share about Superintendent of Schools, W. Jeffrey Booker. As this is Dr. Booker's last Board of Education meeting as our superintendent, we would like to take time to reflect on some of the most significant accomplishments during his nine-plus years as Superintendent of Schools. In the area of school construction and facility renovations, during Dr. Booker's tenure, Gaston County Schools was able to expand remaining funds from the 2007 School Bond Referendum that included many capital needs projects, the renovation of Hunter House High School, and the construction of three new school facilities. Stewart W. Kramer High School opening in 2013, Pleasant Ridge Elementary School opening in 2017, and Stanley Middle School opening in 2018. In May 2018, the citizens of Gaston County approved a $250 million school bond referendum, the largest in Gaston County Schools' history, with overwhelming support. The 2018 school bonds have made it possible to address much-needed renovation and repair projects at many schools across the county. Open a new Belmont Middle School in 2021 and replace the aging Greer Middle School campus with a new school that is scheduled to open in 2025. During Dr. Booker's time as superintendent, Gaston County Schools became a model district for school safety, thanks to the investment in and constant focus on safety and security. The district's ongoing partnership with the Gaston County Police Department, Gaston County Sheriff's Office, city police departments, and other agencies, as well as various school security initiatives, have contributed to Gaston County having one of the best school safety rates in the state when compared to the largest school districts. In academics, Gaston County Schools recorded steady progress in student proficiency and academic growth prior to the COVID-19 pandemic and saw the graduation rate reach an all-time high. Coming out of the pandemic, students have achieved significant academic growth, a sign that schools are moving the right direction toward improved student achievement. In the area of career and technical education, the district gained statewide recognition for the number of industry-recognized credentials earned by students, and renewed attention on career and technical education connected students with local businesses and created job-related opportunities for students. While Dr. Booker has served as superintendent, the number of school choice and magnet school options for students and families increased from two to 22 in a seven-year span. Prior to 2016, when Hawksnest Intermediate School was transformed into the Hawksnest Steam Academy Magnet School for grades K through five, Gaston County Schools had only two school choice programs in the district, Highland School of Technology and the Gaston Early College High School. The school choice options also include the Gaston Virtual Academy, which was one of the few online schools operated by a school system when it was established in 2017. Additionally, Dr. Booker and district leaders worked with the County Commission and county government to secure more local funding for Gaston County Schools. The additional funds supported employee and teacher pay supplements and benefits, facility maintenance and capital projects, expansion of programs, technology, inflationary costs, and other areas. Gaston County Schools also saw advancements in the areas of technology and communication. The district achieved its goal of providing a computing device for every student, expanding Wi-Fi access at all schools, upgrading technology infrastructure, and ensuring that schools have up-to-date technology for teacher and student use. Further, the district updated its website, introduced a mobile app, and produced more programs for Channel 21. The global pandemic was an unprecedented time for everyone, and Gaston County Schools was not immune from the drastic effects of COVID-19. Fortunately, through Dr. Booker's careful leadership and cooperation with the local Health Department and other agencies, Gaston County Schools was able to implement a plan that took the health, safety, and well-being of students, employees, and others into consideration while being able to operate schools on a staggered schedule. Doing so kept students engaged in academics and lessened the impact of learning loss. As superintendent, Dr. Booker made it a priority to establish, renew, and/or expand numerous business and community partnerships to enhance academics, athletics, professional developments, and other areas. Most notable are Gaston County Schools' partnerships with Caramont Health, Gaston College, Belmont Abbey College, Gardner Web University, Truist, Courage Kia, Wells Fargo, GSM Services, Duke Energy, the Gaston County Health Department, and the Gaston County Education Foundation, to name just a few. Professional development opportunities for teachers, administrators, classified staff, and other employees became an area of concentration for Dr. Booker to coincide with Gaston County Schools' vision of inspired lifelong learning. Through the Superintendent's Leadership Academy, the district has been able to grow, encourage, and develop the next generation of classroom teachers and school central-level administrators. One personal point of pride for Dr. Booker has been Gaston County Schools' commitment to always demonstrating a spirit of caring and giving. The district's annual contribution to the United Way of Gaston County has ranged from approximately $90,000 to $100,000 plus. And over three separate years as part of the Nichols for Neighbors campaign, the schools collected a total of $65,000 for schools in North and South Carolina that were affected by hurricanes and floods. Additionally, Dr. Booker took pride in our schools raising thousands of dollars for charitable organizations and conducting various collection drives to help people in need. And during the 2018-2019 academic year, Gaston County Schools celebrated its 50th anniversary in a big way with a parade, museum exhibit, photo display, employee talent show, and other special activities. Dr. Booker supported the year-long celebration and even agreed to ride in a convertible Mustang from Tyndall Ford in the Big 50 Parade, and he and Mrs. Booker looked great in that Mustang. Perhaps most notable, Dr. Booker was chosen by his fellow superintendents as the Southwest Region Superintendent of the Year twice for 2016, 2017, and for 2022, '23, and was selected as a finalist both times for the North Carolina Superintendent of the Year recognition. I know you recall the saying, "A picture is worth a thousand words." So at this time, we have a two-minute video presentation that provides highlights and pictures of Dr. Booker's time as our superintendent. So let's take a look at what these pictures have to say. From focusing on academic progress and expanding programs for students to build strong partnerships and celebrating countless achievements, Dr. Booker has moved Gaston County Schools forward. We are grateful for his vision, leadership, and commitment to public education, which has made us stronger, more successful, and given us plenty of reasons to celebrate our schools. So thank you, Dr. Booker. And, Mr. Chairman, that completes my comments.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hagens, for sharing that information about Dr. Booker's accomplishments. And those are just a highlight of his time in Gaston County Schools. As we all know, as we look a lot younger 10 years ago. Well, Dr. Booker, words cannot express how much we appreciate what you have done for us the last past 14 years, both the Deputy Superintendent and the Superintendent. Certainly, you will be missed dearly. We will be forever grateful for your vision, leadership, and willingness to do everything possible to move this district forward. Without question, you have left your mark on Gaston County Schools, and we appreciate everything you have done for us. We wish much continued success. We extend our best wishes to you, and we say thank you again for commendable service for public education in Gaston County. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Booker to join me down in front for a special presentation. Once I present the Outstanding Service Award to Dr. Booker, I would like for the full Board to take a group picture down on the floor, and then we would like to have our former members join us for a picture also. So let's make our way down. The X, right, Sean?
Yeah, that's correct.
I don't know if that's a good spot. Dr. Booker, I'm gonna call you Jeff Booker. We met about 20 years ago on the basketball court trying to coach our two kids. I don't know if he fired me first or I fired him first. I think it was the players. But no, it's been a wonderful time. Actually, I didn't realize we almost parallel each other in service here. I think I got you about one year, and I'll have one more year, too. But on behalf of this Board and the Board over here, we want to thank you for all your services you gave us for 14 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get one by himself first, and I'll get, bring you in as well.
All right.
State of presenting the award.
Okay. Let's paint.
All right.
Are we balanced?
Mr. Chris, can I bring you in here, please?
Sure.
Come balance this, please. Are you smiling? Is he smiling?
Everybody's smiling.
Now we need to shake hands.
Come on. Come on. Come on. These people want cake.
Cheer on.
Come on, David.
Come on, both of you others.
All Board members? Come on. Come on, Weldon. Come on, David.
We got to say here, here.
Where do you want to show? You want the pass in the back?
Right here. You can get right beside, right here. I'm sorry, Kevin. I would never do that.
Mark, can you see?
Can you see Kevin?
Yes.
Sean, can you see Kevin?
Yes. All right. Very good.
Now the superintendent.
Yeah, you gotta go around. We got.
Get the superintendent.
It's a race, a try, and you gotta pass the time.
I'll get you two first, watch him sit there.
Do one with the chairs. They want all three of them.
All right, there we go. We could teach you two guys. All right. Now they want you in the past chair. Mr. Collier?
The past chair? Past year for Dr. Booker.
Mr. Moore? Am I missing anybody?
That's a Monty Curry.
Don't get beside Ramsey. All right. All right.
Before we actually do need to see, give y'all an opportunity to say a few words for Mr. Dr. Booker, if y'all would like.
Well, I'll start.
All right.
Todd went over all the accomplishments, but if we really just took a second to think, they have been tremendous. One that really resonates to me, we've probably done more building under Dr. Booker's tenure than we did since the war ended and World War II ended. And that is an amazing, amazing accomplishment for Gaston County Schools. And that has to do with his leadership, his team, and the relationship that we have with County Commission. So kudos to Dr. Booker for that, and we have definitely reaped wonderful benefits, and we're still reaping wonderful benefits. But that's just one of the many things that have propelled our system forward. The other one that will always resonate with me is what we've done with our choice programs. We continue to provide our students with so many different opportunities to expand on their learning experience. And that, again, is a shining, shining star during his tenure. I could go on and on and on, but I know y'all want cake. So thank you, Dr. Booker. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Anyone else?
You waiting for me?
You don't want to follow. You do not want to follow her.
Ladies first. Well, I am going to start with the old African proverb that I love so much. It takes a village to raise a child. And how do you know what's in the village if you never frequent the village? We have been blessed with a pop-up superintendent who has visited the various neighborhoods and communities to assess the needs, to get to know the parents, what their thoughts and dreams are for their children in order to experience success. Jeff Booker, Dr. Booker, was a praying, is a praying superintendent. And you believed in every child. Every child has potential. And you collaborated with your departments to make certain that the needs within the school, family, and community were met so that every child would have an opportunity to experience success. I won't forget the number of times that you've been in my community, the number of times that you stood before my people and talked about the things that you wanted to see happen within the village. During COVID, you really did show off. You worked hard to make certain that children had meals. You wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity or the tools for learning. I'm gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss your careful, your compassion, and your love for all people. And I really didn't want to come tonight. I told you that. And I really didn't want to come tonight, I told you that. But I'm not saying goodbye, I'm just saying farewell to the person that's normally sitting in this seat. Thank you for your caring and thank you for what you have done and the lights that you brought to Gaston County.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie, AM?
Like you said, she, all the dots, both the dots are very hard to follow. And even though our time is short, Dr. Booker, and I hope that my election to the board did not tip the scales in your decision to retire. I learned very quickly that you're a man of high moral character and top-shelf intellect. And I'm gonna miss you, I've enjoyed the time that I've had with you. And you've left an indelible mark on me and I'm thankful that my family is a part of the school system that you led for several years during their time in school.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, anyone else? Mr. Chris?
Well, just not to stand in the way of everybody and some good fellowship, but Dr. Booker, thank you. Thank you for what you've done for the system and echoing all the things that have been said now. I think the first time you and I met was at a robotics competition many years ago. And I think we judged some kids on a structure they could make with marshmallows and straws. Thank goodness our buildings are better than that. But again, thank you for your service to the district. And like AM said, in our short time here, we've enjoyed working with you and thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Mr. Dabney?
Jeff, I just wanted to say that I wish you the same success in your new endeavors that you have provided us the last nine years. We have become very, very successful. You've paved a road for us that we can continue. And I wish you every happiness and every opportunity that you can get. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Dabney.
Mr. Chair? I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for this district. It's been an exciting, what, seven and a half years? And we, I've enjoyed serving with you. I've learned a lot. And I will continue the friendship we've had. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Kenlaw?
Well, as the two new guys have said, it's been a short time, but it's been a blessing. Thank you for your leadership, I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And as I said before, I'm not that guy and I appreciate you saying that to me, thank you.
When closing, I'm gonna go to our past chairman and past superintendent. Gaston County has a tradition and it's a special tradition. Reeves was able to pass for Tom to him and he was ready to run. And then also our other chairmen are out there, David, Kevin, and Mark. It makes somebody easy to work with when you can trust each other. And I think that means more than anything as a Christian with Christian values that your words you word and you don't have to worry about it. And I think that's why it makes it special here. We're all homegrown and I love every bit of it. And you've done a wonderful job. I remember the first budget, you wanted to add money to IT department. It was like, why do you want to do that? Well, we don't have internet in the schools. We're still stuck in analog. So, and so we got up and running that and thank God because we never thought COVID would be so important to have digital classrooms. And then also with the CTE in 2015, that was a game changer. We went from 68% graduation rate to 88% because every kid has their opportunity in our county, like Ms. Guthrie said. Creating pathways for all children to learn and that's huge. And then to top it off, we know we're competitive in the world now of public schools. But also, we got ahead of it with choice programs. And now equity in our programs in this school. Because you have a choice to go anywhere you want and choose your education you want. And when you create ownership to the kid, they excel better. A perfect example is Highland. When y'all put Highland in, that was a game changer. I think they're gonna get another blue ribbon again. So that's probably the second, third. And it's good to see you over there, principal. But that said, I would want to thank everyone for being here. We're gonna have a quick 15-minute reception, so, yes.
Mr. Chair, may I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Behind every good man is a good woman.
Absolutely.
And we want to thank Mrs. Booker because she has listened to the superintendent's stories after hours. So we thank you.
So, we're gonna let Dr. Booker and turn it over to him.
Well, this is overwhelming. And you all know I don't like the light on me. You start thanking people, you'll leave people out. So a big thank you to all, because there's no way to thank each people who have spoken into my life. I think back to my times in Charlotte Mecklenburg and some people who believed in me there at a young age in a leadership position. But really, the biggest thank you goes to our community and to the citizens and the business, all the people who have stepped up to support Gaston County Schools. Nothing is accomplished without our parents trusting us with their most valuable asset. You know, and Dr. Sadler used to say, they didn't keep the good ones at home, they sent us the best they got. And we have tried to do the best we could with what we were given. I was counting up the other day, I've had the pleasure of serving with 21 different school board members that's my time as superintendent. And all of them have been a privilege to work with. We shared good times and we shared some not-so-good times. But no matter what those issues or challenges were, everyone was working for the best of our students and to be as fair as we could with all of our employees. You know, I will say there are four people that this job would have never lasted 10 years without. You know, Dr. Balknight and I actually met in 2004 when I was doing some work here in the district. And we have been together since that time with some crazy ideas. People are always scared when we got on a marker board, trying to think about what's the next thing we might could come up with. Anyone who becomes a superintendent knows the most critical thing you have is your finance officer. And I was very fortunate that Ms. Mary Jo Lindquist, who had done a lot of training of me as my time as deputy, stayed until we could find the right person and that's Gary Hoskins. And I appreciate the walking side by side through many different battles and doing good things. I can't take credit for the next one, Mr. McGloin did that one, but having Ms. McGraw be a vital part of the leadership team has made it a special thing. And to have that skill set that we don't possess and remind us sometimes we have to read to the period is vital. And one person that was recognized, Ms. Stevens, who grew and grew and grew and now leads in our community. Four of them made this job something that I could do. And to all the different people in this school system, the 4,000 people who work. Many of you know I'm the son of educator and I lost my father recently. And he instilled in my brothers that all of us were equal. We looked up on people, we didn't look down on people. And that was the way he had been raised and it's what he entrusted throughout his 38 years in education. And he never left the classroom because he felt that's where he could have the most impact and be a coach and those things. So I love my father. And I know he is looking down, wondering what I'm up to now. You all have mentioned my bride, Rhonda. When you assume the role of superintendent, it is impossible to do it without your family. That picture of them is, when I was installed as superintendent, showed three young people who are now all out on their own and doing things. But there was a lot of their time in this school system where they were the butt of things and they brought me messages from the classroom. And they always wanted to be the one to get to post when school was being canceled. I would say you need to call Todd. And so, but they sacrificed time to support me. Rhonda has had many dynamic Friday night dates at various high school events. But while I'm not the easiest person to love, she has stood by me through all of it. I am blessed to have her as my best friend. I could go on because there are lots of memories and thoughts that are floating through my mind now. But I just want to say it's been my pleasure to serve. And in the most humble, I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve. Public education matters and it is important for us to invest in public education. Thank you for allowing me this honor.
Thank you, Dr. Booker. And again. Well, Dr. Booker, we know that you will continue to advocate for our schools and public schools in our community. And we want to thank you again for the incredible work you've done for Gaston County Schools. Now, we are going to take a 15-minute break. Everyone can enjoy a reception to honor Dr. Booker. And our meeting will continue in 15 minutes, thank you.
Next, we would like to invite Isatu Joff from Ashbrook High School to come forward. Last Wednesday evening, Isatu was among the distinguished service award winners who were recognized by the Gaston County JCs during a dinner and ceremony. And I hope I'm saying your name correctly. Isatu? Okay. Isatu is the founder of a nonprofit chapter of Cancer Kids First NC, which focuses on providing support for children with cancer. She rallied a group of teen volunteers who have worked to bring awareness to pediatric cancer and collected more than $1,000 through various fundraisers. Each month, it has been her goal to have either a fundraiser collection drive or some type of service project to benefit Levine Children's Hospital. Additionally, Isatu is one of 18 students to be selected to participate in the North Carolina Governor's School and will attend the prestigious academic enrichment program beginning next week at Winston-Salem State University, where she will study natural science. Isatu is an impressive student, to say the least, who is focused on doing well, making a difference, and having an impact on the people around her.
I'm going to steal some of your words. An impressive student, to say the least. Yes, you are, Ms. Isatu. We want you to know that we are very proud of you. As a matter of fact, we know how the green waves operate. Because I had a green wave. And I want you to know that your caring spirit, your caring heart, and there is a little motto, together we can with the cancer, working with children. You are another great paying his hour. I want you to know that. And it gives me great pleasure. I'm going to come to you. It gives me great pleasure to walk over to you and to say thank you for loving your community and for the compassionate heart that you have. It's an honor, on behalf of our board chair, by our chair, superintendent, board members, and this distinguished audience here, to be able to present you with this plaque. And you're going to Winston-Salem State the Rams for summer school? That is just great. On behalf of the Gaston Board of Education, I wish to present this to you, a certificate of recognition for outstanding achievement, presented by the Gaston County JCs for your service. We are very proud of you. You know what? I'm not going to worry about my future as long as we have young people like you taking care of us. So we present it to you.
Ms. Guthrie, after you get this picture, I would like to invite Sister Principal Amber Tuttle to join us this way.
I would be happy to. Such a beautiful young lady. Yes. I think so. We're going to keep track of her. We're going to track her. Okay. Oh, you hold it. It's yours.
Thank you.
Mrs. Byers to come forward at this time. Mrs. Byers is a veteran educator with more than 20 years of successful teaching experience. During her tenure in the classroom, she has used her wealth of knowledge, skills, talents, and expertise to advance academic achievement for hundreds of children. This past school year, Mrs. Byers volunteered to teach a group of 40 students that needed additional academic support, with an emphasis on small group and one-to-one personalized instruction. Despite the extra workload, Mrs. Byers took on this responsibility, knowing that it was up to an educator like her to help the students experience success and ensure they receive a top-notch education. We are congratulating Ms. Darlene Byers on winning the JCs Distinguished Service Award for 2023.
I've known this lady for a while. I'm going to let you hold that. And nothing, this doesn't surprise me in the least, because this is the type of teacher and person that she is. And I know y'all know all about the JCs and the Rotary. They're organizations that find needs, that are great in every community, and they do so many good things. That's Darlene. She's always looking for things to do and to enhance our children and their growth and their capabilities, expand their educational needs, and perfect example. So couldn't go to a better and more deserving person. You're phenomenal, and you make such a difference in our children's lives. So congratulations on behalf of the board, our superintendent, Mr. Ramsey, and all the other board members. We're thrilled. And get this every year.
While they're getting this picture, I would like to invite Bridget Best, principal of Pleasant Ridge. Yeah, that's you, Bridget. Come on. And also, Mr. Byers, would you like to come join the photo, sir? Ms. Chair, you also, she had 20 years at the college before she joined us.
I think so. We're going to keep track of her. We're going to track her. Okay. Oh, you hold it. It's yours.
Thank you.
And now would you let the board congratulate Ms. Byers?
The JCs Distinguished Service Award for Outstanding Teacher was presented to Darlene Byers of Pleasant Ridge Elementary School. We would like to invite Mrs. Byers to come forward at this time. Mrs. Byers is a veteran educator with more than 20 years of successful teaching experience. During her tenure in the classroom, she has used her wealth of knowledge, skills, talents, and expertise to advance academic achievement for hundreds of children. This past school year, Mrs. Byers volunteered to teach a group of 40 students that needed additional academic support, with an emphasis on small group and one-to-one personalized instruction. Despite the extra workload, Mrs. Byers took on this responsibility, knowing that it was up to an educator like her to help the students experience success and ensure they receive a top-notch education. We are congratulating Ms. Darlene Byers on winning the JCs Distinguished Service Award for 2023.
I've known this lady for a while. I'm going to let you hold that. And nothing, this doesn't surprise me in the least, because this is the type of teacher and person that she is. And I know y'all know all about the JCs and the Rotary. They're organizations that find needs, that are great in every community, and they do so many good things. That's Darlene. She's always looking for things to do and to enhance our children and their growth and their capabilities, expand their educational needs, and perfect example. So couldn't go to a better and more deserving person. You're phenomenal, and you make such a difference in our children's lives. So congratulations on behalf of the board, our superintendent, Mr. Ramsey, and all the other board members. We're thrilled. And get this every year.
While they're getting this picture, I would like to invite Bridget Best, principal of Pleasant Ridge. Yeah, that's you, Bridget. Come on. And also, Mr. Byers, would you like to come join the photo, sir? Ms. Chair, you also, she had 20 years at the college before she joined us.
Oh, my. Wonderful.
Wonderful.
We conclude our good news tonight by recognizing 17 of our schools for their hard work when it comes to our student information system. The Accountability Department is responsible for conducting a school-based audit for Power School, which is our student information system. Every two years, an audit is completed for each school. At this time, we would like to recognize the schools and data managers for their excellence in reporting, compiling, and managing student information during the 2021, '22, and '22, '23 school years. First, we would like to recognize the schools that achieved a perfect score of 100% on the Power School audit, meaning they had no errors. When I call your name, if you will please come forward to accept your award. First, we have Darla Mellon from the Gaston Early College of Medical Sciences, Natasha Fulbright from Hawksnest Steam Academy, Toni Lawrence from Cramerton Middle School, Dolly Bristol from East Gaston High School, and Kathy Welborn from Webb Street School, if you will come forward at this time. I know that a few of our schools could not be with us, and so we will make sure that the award gets to them.
Well, for y'all that don't know, being a data manager, it's not as simple as it seems. It is a tough job, and one that they have to stay on top of things every single day, every single day. So, to get 100, to score 100, don't know exactly what you had to do, but who knows? That's all I've got to say. And we could not run our schools without our data managers. I do know that. So, congratulations.
And we have a second group of data managers that we would like to recognize. We are recognizing that schools, the schools that scored a 99% on the Power School audit, which also is a significant accomplishment. And at this time, I will call the names of the schools if the data manager or the school representative will come forward. Melissa Knox from Sherwood Elementary, Bonnie Sailors from Ashbrook High School, Leah Stewart from the Gaston Early College High School, Deborah McCarn from Hunter Huss High School, Kristen Boone from North Gaston High School, Becky Ford from Stuart W. Kramer High School, Teresa Whitesides from Belmont Central Elementary, Angela Weaver from Pleasant Ridge Elementary, Sherry Johnston from Belmont Middle School, Susan Johnson from Mount Holly Middle School, Judy Malden from Southwest Middle School, and Kristy Kaiser from the Highland School of Technology. And our data managers in this group, these are our data managers who scored a 99% on the Power School audit. And we also have some of our principals here who are accepting on behalf of their data manager.
Well, I'll take that 99% too, I don't know what I'm talking about, because that's still pretty doggone good. That's good. Very, very good. We'll take that restaurant, won't we, in your nutrition? We'll take that 99%. Again, we can't thank y'all enough for what you do, because y'all make the school tick and click. So, God bless you. Thank you. Okay, principals, any other principals, assistant principals?
And one more.
Members of, members of the board, as we are, we are recognizing all these folks, as you all leave, as you wait just a moment, there are a couple individuals here that all this wouldn't be possible without them. So, I'd like for Scott Castle and Suzie Bradley to come stand on that X. These data managers do phenomenal work, but these are the folks that support them. These are the folks that have to worry about our 20-day count and all the PMRs and things that I call over there going, "This can't be right," and they explain to me why it is right. But they do great work, and they fill in and support. We had 20 position turnovers in our data managers this year, and they supported and filled in for all of those gaps. And so, I just thank you. This is a great example of the backbone of this district that goes unsung every day, but they work tirelessly to support our school. And so, thank you all for what you do, everybody.
A board clerk. We don't have a public spirit. Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval and correction of minutes on May the 1st, 2023 work session, May the 15th, regular meeting. I need a motion of approval. Mr. Devlin?
Sir.
Mr. Chris? Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. All right, the next item on the agenda is report from the Operation Committee, Chairman Brent Moore. The other members are Lee Devlin, Dot Cherry, and A.M. Stevens.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Cherry's going to give that report.
All right. Thank you.
Operations Committee met on Monday, June 5th, at 8:30 here in the boardroom. Members in attendance were Chairman Moore, myself, and A.M. Stevens. Discussions included the following. Executive Director of Auxiliary Services, Morgan Hushard, updated us on numerous summer projects, our two state-funded capital projects, and the progress of Greer Middle School construction. Two architectural firms have been selected through the RFQ process and will begin design work on the eight-classroom addition at Belmont Central Elementary and on safety and facade improvements at North Gaston High School. The Cherivale City Manager had requested that Gaston County Schools allow Gaston County to build a gymnasium on Gaston County School property adjacent to Cherivale Elementary School. However, no recommendations were made regarding this request, as the city of Cherivale has apparently found a different location for this gym. A developer had requested permanent access to our road at One Learning Place. They have also asked the board to consider selling .75 of an acre that we own that adjoins their property. The committee has declined to recommend this request. A change order for $300,000 has been issued to replace unsuitable soils with stone and GeoGrid for the drainage project at North Gaston High School. The committee recommended approval for this change order. Associate Superintendent of Finance and Operations and Chief Financial Officer Gary Hoskins updated us, updated us on the school business systems modernization. As of June 2nd, all retirement accounts are up to date, and employee benefit files have been submitted, but are waiting to be accepted. Comp time is currently the only global issue outstanding, and we are working with Oracle and Cherry Road for a solution. Fresh Desk, a ticketing system used by employees to document questions and concerns regarding payroll and HR, and to streamline the communication regarding these issues, began on May 1st. There are currently 318 unresolved payroll folder issues and 13 unresolved HR issues. Keisha Kohn, the Executive Director of HR, informed us that there were currently 220 certified vacancies and 110 classified vacancies. The committee reviewed and is recommending approval of the following contracts on the consent agenda tonight. Ashbrook High School Boiler-Chiller replacement, Kaiser Elementary carpet replacement, cellular phone contract, VoIP contract, and WAN contract. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, August the 7th, at 8:30 here in the boardroom. And that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. The next item on the agenda is our Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Ms. Dot Guthrie is the chair of that committee. The other members are Todd Kenlaw, Josh Crisp, and Robbie Lovelace. Ms. Guthrie.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Crisp will present our minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. So, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on June 5th here in the boardroom, and the meeting was called to order at 12 noon. Members present were Dot Guthrie, Josh Crisp, Todd Kenlaw, Dot Cherry, and Jeff Ramsey. Gary Hoskins, Chief Financial Officer, provided an update about the school business system modernization. Mr. Hoskins provided information about the retirement files and the global and individual concerns of some employees. Brett Buchanan shared information about the 2023-2024 Career and Technical Education CTE Grant. The grant supports CTE teachers and supports staff salaries, classroom equipment, technology, professional development, and student credentials. Stacy Huffin gave the committee information on student-specific support aids, formerly known as one-on-ones. These aids support the development and management of safe, inclusive environments within the classroom and school setting. Jill Payne provided information on restorative practices, professional development. Restorative practices focus on equipping educators for building and strengthening relationships in the community. Educators will learn the fundamental theory of practices for engaging with students, staff, and parents in the school setting. The executive directors shared an update on summer school. Summer camp for all levels will begin Monday, June 12th through June 29th, 2023. Approximately 3,400 students are expected to participate in summer camp. Academic services will have the following items on the consent agenda for the Board of Education meeting on June 12th, 2023. Federal Programs Budget 2023-2024, the 2023-2024 Career and Technical Education Grant, Student-Specific Support Aids, Restorative Practices, Professional Development. Our meeting adjourned at 1:16 PM. Ms. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Next item on our agenda is Career and Technical Education Update. This is information on Brent Buchanan.
Good afternoon, members of the Gaston County Board of Education, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, Dr. Booker. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. I'm going to try to pack a whole lot of awesome and a little bit of time, so bear with me. I've got a lot of great updates that transpired in the '22-'23 school year, and I want to give you a few of those highlights this evening. We'll start with a little bit of scope and size of the overall impact of CTE in Gaston County schools. Please realize that we are the 10th-largest district in North Carolina out of 174 public school units. That would also apply to our CTE program being the 10th-largest in the state of North Carolina. I want to give you some of these facts, just so you can understand the impact of some of the great highlights I'm going to cover later on in the presentation, the volume that encompasses that. So, 23 total schools offer CTE program. That's 10 high, 11 middle, one alternative, and the Gaston Virtual Academy. Also, our grant supports 140 CTE staff in those 23 schools, the majority being CTE teachers with a small amount of support staff. Overall, course opportunities per our grant are offered in grades 6 through 12, 150-plus course codes. If we incorporate our CTE Career and College Promise Gaston College courses, the number goes up to well over 200. Student enrollment very close to hitting 17,000 total students took a CTE course. That does include duplication, meaning a student may have taken a course in first semester and second semester, Level 1, Level 2. And then finally, one of the things that will start off, the highlights of this school year, an 80.5% proficiency number for over 4,400 tested students in all 10 high schools. So, to put that in perspective, in the last three years, everyone's had a hard reset coming out of COVID. Three years ago, we reset at a 72.1, last year a 77.1, and this year an 80.5. So, if you had to take, if you had to put a letter grade on us as an entire district for CTE, that would be an above average or a B letter grade.
And you would probably be ranked in the top half size of districts in the state of North Carolina.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Moving forward, what are we most known for? Our career awareness opportunities. I was actually in a virtual meeting today showcasing this, having people asking more about what we've been doing. So, 5th-grade career awareness, this is something brand-new, an initiative placed out as a, I guess, challenge, not a directive yet, per DPI last year, to do 5th-grade career awareness. That would be supported by our own Business Advisory Council. What can we do earlier in a student's school What can we do earlier in a student's school career to expose them to careers at an earlier age? 5th grade is the new initiative placed on us by DPI. And with that being said, last year, we offered this to all of our elementary schools on a volunteer basis. By word of mouth, we went from five schools participating to this year 12 schools, and last year 367 students in 5th grade experiencing a career awareness activity to 1,000-plus. That's not an arbitrary number. Every time our three career development coordinators get in front of these students, we are going to get survey data from them. So, we have data responses to see how the students enjoyed it and to see how we can improve it. So, that number is a hard factual number. Again, that doesn't include duplicates. So, as you can see, we currently have three menu options. Underneath WA Best, you'll see our Electrical Trades Experience. Underneath Bessemer Central, that will be our Healthcare Experience. And then underneath Kaiser, that would be our Carpentry Construction Experience. That's a brand-new addition this year. So, it's available to all of our elementary schools. They can select it at their leisure. We can come out and do two, one at a time, and then to get the duplication, we may see or be in front of a student multiple times, but they're getting a different experience each time. I can't say enough about our middle school career development coordinators because that's three individuals out to 12 elementary schools and 1,000 students. And then those same individuals did what I'm getting ready to say right here. Middle school career awareness, they represent 12 middle schools and have been in front of 6,000 students with the data to back that up. Again, that includes duplicates, but at the same time, not only are they offering opportunity programs in regards to teaching our students about local businesses, taking them on field trips, maybe financial literacy, career awareness, personal interest inventories, the list goes on and on, along with implementing our Students at Work Program, a statewide initiative we have always been a part of. This year, overall, 3,500 students participated. During COVID, we went completely virtual at the turn of a dime, and now we're going virtual and back to in-person with sending students out to Dominion Energy and Duke Energy along with our virtual tours that those middle school career development coordinators created on location with our local businesses. Something else we're extremely proud of, the Be Pro, Be Proud truck. So, this transfer truck here is a National Home Builders Association initiative. They have two representing the state of North Carolina. It's very hard to schedule this truck because it is extremely popular. So, in November, we started working on scheduling this opportunity in partnership with Gaston College. We were able to bring this truck on location at Gaston College for two consecutive days during their spring break and have full access to everything that we needed to set this up and run 12 middle schools worth of 350-plus students out there for two days consecutively. Once the students are on the truck, this is an image of our students inside the truck. There are 10 virtual reality career awareness experiences. If you can see the student in the far back, that's the electrical lineman simulator. So, he's got a VR headset on, and he's in a lineman bucket. So, there's that experience. There's carpentry, electrical, plumbing, welding, two heavy equipment operations. So, the yellow simulator, you can see the base image of it to the right, that is a bulldozer and a crane operator. Students were thoroughly enjoyed, excuse me, thoroughly engaged and enjoyed this. I've never seen our students stay so engaged from the time they set foot in an experience to the time they leave. Repetitively, 12 schools constantly showing that same level of excitement and engagement. It was so popular that our high school career development coordinators went ahead and scheduled it for next year for their schools. The minimum time, excuse me, that they could get them to come out next year was an eight-month wait. And then in working with some of my job-alikes, I think that's went out to a 12-month wait to get this Be Pro, Be Proud initiative to come on location free of charge by the National Home Builders Association. So, extremely proud to have that out on location for our students to experience. So, that's middle school and elementary school, three individuals, 7,000 students, 24 schools. They put in work and doing a phenomenal job. Moving on to high school career awareness, we have 10 high school career development coordinators representing our 10 traditional high schools. A renewed focus, a laser-intense focus, if you will, of putting out career opportunities in front of our high school students. 18,000 students, with data to back it up, does include duplicates that they have been working on each and every week to offer different opportunities to those students. Something else they've done at a record-high number, I'm going to say that a lot here moving forward, very proud of that. We've had 30-plus students participate in a 120-hour internship that students can earn a CTE course credit while doing so. On top of that, new record-high 21 businesses, local businesses, offered those opportunities to our 30-plus students. And on top of that, I think the number came down to 28 of those were paid. That's $13 to $15 an hour while they're earning a credit, getting a real-world experience that you're going to hear me talk about in a second transferred to a real career opportunity upon graduation. Something else very proud of, partnership with Duke Energy, we were able to secure a grant from them where we could use those funds to supply transportation to students that did not have that opportunity to get to and from their internship. First time we've ever been able to do that. Each year, we will encounter things like that. Now, we can fill that gap, and it's no longer a concern of us moving forward. Something else new, Lunch and Learns. We have offered 65-plus Lunch and Learns in all 10 of our high schools, and that is in partnership with 35-plus businesses. That's new this year. Definitely had some great comments from some of our businesses that participated in our Business Advisory Council, really appreciated this new way of involving students during lunch. The career development coordinator will stay out with the business and bring students to them. That way, they are getting foot traffic in front of them instead of just sitting up in the corner and being ignored by the students. So, really great, much better way to approach this and get our businesses even more engaged. Last-minute opportunity, like to say anymore, there is just so many ways to partner with businesses and other community members. Goodwill is a perfect example, was in a meeting, and they offer a forklift training opportunity to adults. It's a two-day deal. Talked to them after the meeting and said, "How hard do you think it would be for us to offer that to our students? We do have some time constraints. I don't know about the two-day deal." No problem, they accommodated something special for us, a one-day opportunity that allowed us to get students over there and back during the school day. So, our events manufacturing programs that are in Hunter Huss High School and Bessemer City High School, we bus those students over to the Goodwill location. They received that hands-on with the forklift training. At the end of that day, they were all for the certification process, every single one of them passed. So, really proud of that, just something that happened last minute, and we're able to pull that off. Hopefully, we can do it in years to continue. Something else I'm extremely proud of, if you knew the amount of effort and time behind saying this next sentence, it would wow you. It's extremely challenging. So, the CNA Certified Nursing Program, so we have Nursing Fundamentals Program in all 10 of our high schools. There's only about two other, excuse me, systems in the state of North Carolina that have that much volume. It's extremely hard to pull this off because you have to have a certified test facilities, which some of our high schools have. And then you have to get certified credential evaluators to come on location, which as of last year was an extreme challenge and was causing a lot of hiccups that did not help our students. And taking lessons from last year, this year, we have our testing facilities certified, that's our schools. We also have credential evaluators that are some of our teachers, and for the first time ever, almost 70 students, a 93% pass rate from 70 students across 10 high schools. That's the highest number we've ever hit. One of the things I would like to say a shout-out to in our office, our Instructional Management Coordinator, Ms. Weaver, she has bore the brunt of this and wore every single ounce of this to try to get this number to here. Working with our individual high school nurse aide teachers and our students, able to pull this number off is a tremendous feat, and I can guarantee you, that number and that size, you will not find that in the state with that pass rate. Another thing really proud of, to say we have 30 students in an internship is great to put another cherry on top of that cupcake. If we can transfer those internship opportunities to a full-time employment opportunity, that's what it's all about. So, from the 21 businesses and 30 students, 11 of those businesses offered a full-time employment opportunity to 18 students that were interns. So, it kind of goes both ways. Not only does the student shine so much, the business wants to keep them, the business has impressed the students so much that they want to continue working for them. So, record-high 11 businesses, 18 students were offered an employment opportunity and accepted. With that being said, another first time ever, of all of our internships, we've never had an internship in every single high school, all 10 traditional high schools, in one semester. So, not only did we offer 30-plus, every single high school had one. Half of the students in these images right here were at the career signing day and now are currently employed with those specific businesses. Moving forward, these are our business partners, 21 total, you heard me say, so that's logos for all 21. The main thing here is to focus on the variety. It's not just manufacturing, it's not just construction. It's food services, it's education, it's anything you can think of, a lot of variety. I would say a buffet offered to our students of career opportunities, internship opportunities, not just one or two things to pick from. And then finally, the career signing day, that's one of the things, I guess, I'm always the most proud of in regards to, this is what it's all about. Everything we do in education is to prepare our students for a future beyond graduation, and these students took advantage of this. These are just six quick pictures of what transpired at our career signing day. From the 11 and 18, 10 businesses and 13 students were able to come and participate in the career signing day. It's going to sound odd sounding this, saying this, but we encountered something we've never encountered, and it's good and it's bad. The entire boardroom was full of students, staff, parents, really waiting to be recognized for the career signing day. We had so many people here, they had some standing outside in the lobby. Not proud of that part, but I am very proud of the fact that we had it full in here, and we're looking to move that to a bigger venue next year. We'll just run through a quick list here. Top left, we have Tindall Ford, North Gaston High School. Top center, we have Dixon Quick Coupling, Ashbrook High School. Top right, South Point High School, Steel Specialty Incorporated. Bottom left, Hunter Huss High School with Gaston Emergency Medical. GMs, bottom center, we have, let's see here, South Point High School and GSM, and then bottom right, we have Bessemer City High School and Dixon Quick Coupling. That's just a few examples, not all. So, going to the last thing, usually you'll hear me talk about industry-recognized credentials earned by our students at the accountability level for our grant. It actually goes higher than that, and it all starts with this. So, if you look at the date on this, July 13th, 2022, North Carolina was named the number-one place in the entire United States for places of businesses to be. So, it kind of starts here. So, in the past 10 years, North Carolina has been on this list almost every single year for 10 years straight. This is the first time they've been number-one place for B in the nation. They're currently still, we are currently, number-one until this list is published again. So, by saying that, what's harder, being number-one or staying number-one? And that's one of the things that we're working on as a state from the General Assembly and the governor's level, how to keep businesses here, and that takes a talented, skilled workforce to do so. So, and by saying that, the General Assembly, the governor, and the Chamber of Commerce are looking to put their, I guess you would say, money where their mouth is and start supporting credentialing at the K-12 education. It goes to this initiative right here. By the year 2030, 2 million North Carolinians from the ages of 25 to 44 will either hold a post-secondary degree and/or a high-quality credential. So, the General Assembly started last year, offered $10 million to public school units across the state of North Carolina to use for student industry credentialing. So, the numbers I'm going to show you are a report that go out to the General Assembly and the State Board of Education. This credential attainment report you're looking at is 292 pages long. It all boils down to two top-10 lists. That's what we're looking at every year. The top one is just the sheer volume of credentials earned by a PSU. It's kind of geared more towards your large districts. And the bottom one is the percentage of credentials attained, meaning if you offered X amount of courses and students could earn X amount of credentials, the number they did earn would be a percentage. It's usually geared more towards your smaller districts. I'm going to show you five years' worth of information here. Pay attention to the yellow, that's Gaston County Schools. Before I start, I would like to say, of the top-10 districts in North Carolina, that's affinity group one, there has never, ever been, besides Gaston County Schools, an affinity group one district on both top-10 lists, period. Not only have we done it, we've done it multiple times. So, again, this is the General Assembly, State Board of Education report. It's above CTE's accountability on another level to support us building a talent pipeline for the state and keeping businesses here. So, this is last year, we were number four and number five on both lists. The year before, we were on both top-10 lists again. Three years ago, we were on both top-10 lists and set a record that's never been done before or after, we were number one in both categories. There's never been a PSU do this ever. Four years ago, we were just on one top-10 list, and five years ago, we were on both top-10 lists again. So, with that being said, this kind of statement wraps it up. In the past five years, there has never been a public school unit out of 174, that's 115 school districts, 59 charter schools. There's never been a district match, surpass, get close to saying this next statement. The past four years, excuse me, the past five years, we've been on that top-10 list four out of five years. Like to say thank you, hopefully you're impressed, Dr. Booker. Appreciate all the support you've given CTE. I'd like to, hopefully you would think all that time and effort you are a part of, thank you for everything you've done to help us out.
Thank you, thank you for your hard work. Keep up the good work. Next on the agenda is School Nutrition Annual Report. This is the information I'm, Ms. Calamia.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. Thank you for your time tonight, so I can share the School Nutrition Annual Report. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, looking at this year, this was our first year post-COVID where things were back to the way they were before, and we went back to serving the National School Breakfast and Lunch Program as it was previous. Students had to, again, fill out an application or qualify by some other means to receive free meals unless they were in a CEP school, which I'll explain in a few minutes. We actually did not have a severe drop in our participation, which I was pleasantly surprised about. So, maybe students got used to eating with us during COVID, and they continued. We are serving right now more than 19,000 lunches per day and more than 8,000 breakfasts. So, during the school year, we started our new software program called Titan, which we had to do because it had to correspond with Oracle and because the program we were using was going to be obsolete. And so, anytime you start a new software program, you know that brings all kinds of anxiety. But actually, it went really smoothly. It's been great. That software encompasses everything from a child coming through the line to pick up their meal and ring through the register, to students putting their, or parents putting money on a student's account, to managing our inventory, to purchasing and putting purchase orders into the system when we buy food. So, it's an all-encompassing software. It was a huge undertaking. All the recipes have to go into that system, all the production records, everything we use in school nutrition. So, very happy that went smoothly, and the system is working very well. We filled many of our open school nutrition positions. As you all know, after COVID, there were many positions in lots of departments, and we had more than 50 positions open in school nutrition. There are, up at about 400 positions. So, right now, we're maybe about 10 positions that we haven't filled, which is really great, and we haven't had a big turnover at all. So, our staff is staying put with us, and it's been a good year as far as hiring and retaining staff. We've continued to grow our robust management training program, which recruits and trains managers that run our schools. It's not always easy to find people with that skillset, but once we get them and we train them up well, we found that they stay with us, and it's a rewarding job, and we love doing that. We've initiated the Farm-to-School Program, which I will share with you in a moment, which is really exciting. As far as financials go, we have a positive fund balance in school nutrition in spite of the large increases we've had in food costs and supply costs. As you all know, when you go to the supermarket, how everything has skyrocketed, in addition to the increase in labor costs that we incurred. But in spite of all that, we are in positive fund balance, and we are in good shape financially in school nutrition, which I'm thrilled to report. We apply for every grant that we can possibly apply for to bring in extra income. We've done equipment grants, totally 85,000. We did a local food grant through NCDAs, which is the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, for over 100,000. And we are receiving supply chain money for, because of the disruption in the supply chains through COVID, of over $1 million, $1,000,003. So, that helps with our fund balance as well. I want to talk a little bit about community eligibility, which is the provision that allows some schools that are eligible based on income and area to receive free breakfast and lunch every day for students. And currently, and since 2014, here in Gaston County Schools, we had 19 schools on that program. And I shared with the Operations Committee about a month ago that due to some changes in the criteria that we use to determine who can be CEP, we now, looking at our upcoming school year, '23-'24, will have 40 Gaston County Schools on that program. That is phenomenal, and that means... And that means that students that attend those schools will not have to fill out an application. Families will not have to fill out application, they automatically qualify regardless of their income or economic status.
So that means 40 schools in Gaston County will have 100% free and reduced lunch.
That's exactly what it means, Dr. Booker. Yes, I'm excited about that. So along with that benefit, no application is needed for those students. That means administratively, it relieves a big burden in our department because we don't have to process all those forms. If you're a student at that school, as I mentioned, you will eat free. It reduces the amount of student debt that we incur as a district at the end of the year, because if students don't pay their debt, that stays on our books. And it eliminates the need for what we call complimentary meals. So in this district, when you reach your debt limit as a student, we don't let students go hungry. We provide an alternate meal, which the district also pays for. So by having CEP in 40 schools, we will eliminate all that financial burden. Yes, ma'am.
Elementary school with a sibling at the middle school, so that sibling at the middle school wouldn't have to fill out that application, is it just, does it?
If that middle school does not qualify, is not a CEP school? Yes, they would have to fill out an application. It doesn't matter if you're siblings when it comes to CEP. It does matter when you're on a free and reduced application, but with CEP. But when you look, actually, the list is already posted on the website. I looked this morning, and so you can see all the schools that it will be for this upcoming school year. And you might notice that, you know, usually if a child is in elementary, that middle school probably also is CEP. So you're welcome. So I just wanted to mention briefly the Farm to School. I was calling it a garden project, but now it's no longer a garden, it's becoming a farm. So I can't call it a garden anymore. This is a collaboration between us, Gaston County Schools, Gaston County Cooperative Extension, and Carolina Farm Trust. And outside the building, a school nutrition, we had started with their help, a garden. We, was launched by the master gardener here, Cooperative Extension. Last summer, we harvested 500 pounds of squash and zucchini. And in the, and in the spring, fall, we harvested lettuce for the thousands of salads we serve here in the county. I mean, on any given day, we serve 4,000, 5,000 salads to students. And it wasn't enough for that yet, but we are getting there. And all that product was served in our meal program. I will tell you, we are the only district in North Carolina that has been able to do that. And part of that, thank you Chairman Ramsey, but part of that is because of the central kitchen we have, and that as soon as we harvest the product, we can bring it in the back door and clean and process it and package it for a school. Not everybody has that luxury, so that helps a lot. There are maybe less than a handful of districts in the country that are doing this. There are many school gardens, but not many that are actually using the product to feed children in the school nutrition program. So I'm looking forward to our expansion with the help of facilities and the other partners that we have. This is a little schematic, it's just a snapshot of what it looks like now in the garden outside of our building. And this is what we're planning the first phase. There will be irrigation and a fence coming shortly, and maybe even a greenhouse, so that we can start our seedlings there. And then it will expand from there. And that just gives you a little idea of what it's going to look like. The goal is to produce produce that we can process in our facility and serve to our kids fresh. If we pick it today, we'll serve it, maybe not tomorrow, but maybe the following day, by the time we process and get it to the schools, which is very exciting to me. And we're going to expand now in the spring. By the end of the summer, we probably will have about the six beds in, so. Summer feeding is already underway. We started last week with our community partners, 52 sites were open. And 14 sites started this week, our actual camp sites here in Gaston County, serving breakfast and lunch. This is the community. Our students here that are coming to camp in our building are receiving a hot lunch. Breakfast is cold, but the lunch is hot. And then the cold sites, the camp sites are going to be a bagged lunch and breakfast. And as you know, from our past meetings, we have three buses that transportation gives us. This year, we expanded to four buses that go down into the communities that can't get out and come to our sites. Yeah, and the sites are all listed on the website as well, if anybody needs to access that. We continue with our community outreach, providing, this has actually doubled for our Head Start Program. 250 kits, every little, every day we feed. We partner with the dairy line and No Kid Hungry, and the YMCA and our Aspire Supper Program. So right now, there are four, I believe next year there'll be five. We're going to add Pinewood to that group that serves supper, early supper to our students in that Aspire Program. And so again, National School Breakfast and Lunch will be our funding source. Non-CEP school families will need to apply. So in those 15 schools we have left, they will have to fill out an application to be eligible for free meals. And those will be available July 1st. This upcoming year, I'm hoping that we're going to increase our meal participation with all the CEP schools that are going to be added. We're going to grow our Farm to School Project, increase the processing over at our central kitchen facility, and of course, manage our commodities, the million and a half dollars we get every year in commodity product that we spend every dime to feed our kids. Continue to recruit talented staff, and of course, advertise with our new app that's, goes along with Titan. I have an action item for you tonight to ask for you to approve our bids for the upcoming year, and also to approve the bid that was won by a company to produce, to provide a piece of machinery that I want to buy for our facility to package all the produce and things that we're going to be growing. It's a large machine. We have, those of you on the Operations Committee that came to the building, you saw we have small, this is a larger version of that, which we will need. So thank you, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Go back to CEP, how often do we have, is that reevaluated?
That's a very good question, Mr. Chair. So we have four years now with those schools. So we are, we know that for four years, that is going to be, those 40 schools are locked in.
Okay, thank you.
After that time, we reevaluate. But as long as the criteria does not change, which is not expected, we should be good with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So let's go on and move to the next part of the agenda, the school year 2023, 2024 formal bids for our action item. So you're, so is it, you want to make a motion? Well, I think she, she wanted.
Oh.
I don't have a copy of the bids.
It's, I can tell you those, I mean, it's a, the biggest bid is our distributor, U.S. Foods. It's about $3 million.
Thank you.
And now you have my glasses, too. And then our produce bid, which is, this is for fresh apples, it's over 100,000, anything over 90,000 from Peterson Farms, that they slice Kellogg's Company. Of course, you know that's where we buy cereal. JTM is our meat and beef and products. Nardones is our pizza company. Tyson is chicken, and Schwan's is another, they make those famous cheese sticks that all the kids like, you know. And Gold Creek is another chicken processor. Foster Cavernous is where we buy most of our fresh produce, but that's going to go down once we grow our own. Yes, so actually, our total bids, oh, there's one, the next page, has gone down because pricing has, has come down. And milk and fresh orange juice is the dairy farmer's pet dairy. And then, of course, paper supplies, Southeastern Paper, no change there. And then the last item is that piece of equipment that I was mentioning to you. It's a heat sealing, tray sealing, which is similar to what we have, just larger.
All right, okay, Ms. Chair.
I make a motion that we approved her expenditures for the upcoming school year.
That's it. Thank you.
Any discussion, all in favor? That's your name.
And members of the board, before Angela steps back, you need to recognize she is running the largest restaurant chain in Gaston County. It's an enterprise fund that will spend between $15 and $20 million a year, depending on overall volume, cost, price, assessing, not to mention hundreds of employees delivering these meals. And when you talk to students, and I have focus groups of students, never fails, they want to talk about someone who's nice to them in the cafeteria, does that extra thing for them. And as she's already mentioned, cheese dippers, the parfaits, and the famous tostada pizza. And so I just appreciate what she has done and the level of expertise she has brought in her tenure here. So thank you for what you do.
And thank you, Dr. Booker, for your support, and I'm going to miss you dearly.
I'm just fascinated about that garden.
I know.
I know, I'm so excited.
It's a farm, excuse me.
It's a farm now. That's what the experts tell me. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Next on the agenda is out of county tuition. This is an action item, and Gary's going to be with us four times, so.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. I do have four items that I would like to discuss with the board for their, and ask for their approval or just provide information. The first item is out of county tuition. This is an item that this board approves every year. You can see where our out of county tuition has been over the last three years. It currently stands in-state at $1,759 per student. We currently have 27 students that are out of county that are paying this tuition. For out of state, it is currently $8,717, and we do not have any students that are out of state that are attending Gaston County Schools. However, we still have to have a tuition rate in case someone does choose to do that. So we determine the in-state tuition rate by taking our local operating revenue, dividing it by our ATM. The local operating revenue includes what the county appropriation is for us, as well as any fines, forfeitures, and interest that we may have, and then divide that by just under 30,000 students. We come up with $1,779 per student for in, out of county tuition in-state. So if they are out of state, we take that number, the $1,779, and also add back the state per pupil expenditure amount. And the most recent data that they have is 2021, 2022, and that amount is $7,166. So when you add those two together, we're recommending an out-of-state tuition rate of $8,945. So Mr. Chair, we would like to ask for a recommendation to set the out-of-county tuition rates for both in-state and out-of-state students.
Mr. Devin makes a motion.
How many students did you say were out of county?
27, I listed 70, thank you.
Mr. Chris second, any discussion, all in favor? Thank you. All right, Gary, the next one up is the 2023, 2024 budget update. This is the information item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, this is a budget update, which is just informational. Just as a reminder, our current beginning of the year budget is $379 million for this year, just to put it in perspective. The largest contributors to this bonus or budget is the state, which is over $200 million, federal grants, and also local funding. So starting with the state budget, a significant amount of our teachers, school administrators, student support, teacher assistance, clerical custodial personnel, as well as our transportation, school safety, at-risk supplies, et cetera, are all paid using state dollars. So right now, the state currently has a biannual budget, and we are in the last year of a biannual budget. So next year, we'll start the beginning of a two-year budget. So that budget will cover 2023 through 2025. The governor has released his recommendations for this biannual budget. That was on March 16th. A couple weeks later, the House released their proposal on March 29th. And about a month ago, the Senate released their proposal on May 15th. As you may have read, the Senate and the House now have a supermajority. They had a member of, member of the General Assembly flip from a Democrat to a Republican. So that means that if the governor does veto a budget, then the General Assembly may be able to override that veto, which they have done in the past. So we concentrate mainly on the Senate and the House budget proposals. One thing where they're consistent, and both of these proposals are about four, 500, 600 pages, so this is just a few highlights, we'll wait until we get the conference budget. But both the House and the Senate are recommending a decrease in the state income tax rate. It's currently 4.75%, it would drop it to 4.5%, so obviously, a reduction of some revenues. The House has a more attractive budget recommendation from where we stand. They are recommending teachers' masters pay as well as a teacher supplement, whereas the Senate is not at this point. And also, when you look at the salary increases, the House increases are around 4.25%, essentially across the board, whereas the Senate is about 2.5% for most. And then with the, with the teachers, it goes from a high of 5.13% to a low of 0.37%, and I'll show you that here. So in the left-hand column, you see the current monthly rate for teachers. Starting teachers currently starts at $3,700. The House proposal is up 4.25%, they're recommending 38.57, and the Senate is recommending $3,900. So they're recommending a much larger increase for the beginning teachers. However, look at the very bottom, a teacher with 25 years' experience currently is at $5,400. Under the Senate proposal, it'd be $5,420. So you can see here, in the middle, under the House, everything is right around 4.25%, whereas the Senate starts at a much higher rate for beginning teachers and a much lower rate for those experienced teachers. So that's a big change in those two proposals. So both the House and the Senate have identified, and their conference committee conferees, they were appointed earlier this month. They have announced that they expect to have a conference budget prior to the end of the fiscal year. This has only happened once since I've been here, so we would certainly be excited to have that. And again, as a reminder, what would happen is they would come up with a conference budget that'd have to be approved by the House and the Senate. It would then go to the governor for his approval or veto. If he vetoes it, they would have to come back to the House and Senate to override that veto, if they're able to do that. So, and then once we have a final budget, then it has to go to DPI. And DPI has to look at that budget, and again, it's going to be 600 pages or so, and allot those funds to all the different schools based on what they have in the budget. So it is still going to take a little while, even if it were to be approved in the coming weeks. The local budget, the county's already approved their budget. We use local funds for salary supplements, instructional supplies. We talked about our technology and one-to-one Chromebooks, we use local money for that. Utilities, insurance, our athletics and arts programs. And also, we have to take a pro-rata percentage of all the money that we receive from the county and provide that to charter schools. So as you may recall, the current year that we're in right now, the 2023, 2024 year, the county is providing us $52.5 million. We asked the county for an additional, almost $2.9 million, and we were provided an additional $500,000 instead. So our total county appropriation for next year will be just over $53 million. And if you'll recall, the county is also, they have lowered the tax rate on property taxes, actually a little bit below revenue neutral. So similar to the state having, you know, a reduction of some of the taxes, the county has that as well, which is one of the reasons they can't continue to fulfill all of our requests. And you can see over the past three or four years, we took a cut in 2020, 2021, as we know that was a COVID year. We've had increases in each of the past three years, but each of those increases has decreased over the over the last three years. 2021, we got 1.7 million from the county increase. 2022-23, we got $1 million, and the upcoming year, 23-24, $500,000. So, some of the challenges that we have, you know, part of that 2.9 million that we asked for is if the county, or if the state does increase salaries, which both the Senate and the House have projected increases ranging from 2.5% to 4.25%, we will have to reflect those increases in all the employees that we pay with local dollars, our facilities, people, you know, custodians, et cetera. Also, if they increase the cost of employee-provided benefits, which they have done every year since I've been here, that's our retirement contribution, our health insurance premiums, et cetera, we will have to eat those, those increases. So, that's one of the challenges that we have, as well as the impact on, of inflation, and that was a pretty substantial impact this year. Hopefully, next, the upcoming year, it'll be less, but we'll see. And then also, we know that the ESER funds, SR2 expires September of this year, SR3 expires September of 2024. We have been telling the county for several years that we are using ESER funds to buy these computers for all these, the students, so that we can stay one-to-one on a refresh cycle, so that when a 12th grader graduates, that 9th grader's gonna get a brand-new computer, and they'll keep that for the term of their, their high school career. We've been using ESER money for that. So, we've been telling the county for three or four years now, this is coming. Also, our nurses in the schools is another big expense that we've been using ESER for. So, that's why I bring this up. Might not be a big impact this year, but coming, you know, in the coming years, it will be a potential impact. Also, a part of what the county gives us is capital outlay, and that is not bond funds, these are just repairs, maintenance and repairs on existing capital projects. And as we've talked, we've got 5.1 million square feet of, of office space in Gaston County Schools. We currently receive $2.2 million, which is 44 cents per square foot. We did ask for $6.5 million, however, they held us flat at $2.2 million. Now, that's about $1 million more than we were getting a couple of years ago, but that's still, you know, it still makes it difficult to maintain 5.1 million square feet of aging office space, school space. The federal budget, the primary components of that is Title I. We have 30 schools, individuals with disabilities, CTE, and of course, as I mentioned earlier, remaining COVID-19 funds. We've got just over 300,000 in our SR2, which expires in a few months. We have that budgeted out to, to run out to zero. And then, our SR3 is also budgeted. We've got $46 million there. We're gonna be using seven, seven and a half million of that this week as we pay our COVID retention bonuses that will be paid on Monday. Those will be funded this, this week. And of course, we've talked about the COVID money, what we've used it for, retention bonuses is one of the big things, but also, the Chromebooks that we've been buying, the summer programs that we've been operating over the past three or four years, additional allotments and so forth. Any questions on the budget? If not, Mr. Chairman, I will move to the interim budget, which is an action item. This will be our last scheduled, or this is our last scheduled board meeting prior to the end of our fiscal year, that's June 30th. So, state law requires that we have an interim budget, and since the, the General Assembly does not yet have a budget, we cannot present you with a budget resolution. So, we will be asking you, in accordance with state law, to approve an interim budget, and this is something we've done every year, except for maybe one, when the, when the General Assembly did have a budget prior to fiscal year, and, but we've had to do every year. So, what we are recommending, Mr. Chairman, is that this board approve an interim budget for the 2023-2024 year to be 80% of our existing budget, and as soon as the state approves their budget, we'll have a budget resolution for you to approve at that point in time.
Mr. Devin. Chris, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item on the agenda is new classroom teacher recruitment retention bonus. This is an action item.
The last item here is an action item. So, as we've talked in the past, this board, over the last couple of years, has made a series of approvals to use our COVID funds for our existing employees, qualified employees, to pay them retention bonuses. And those employees that have been here for the last couple of years had the opportunity to earn up to $5,000 in retention bonuses. As I mentioned, we'll be paying the, the last retention bonus next week. And that has done, I think, a lot to help keep our existing staff engaged in here with Gaston County Schools. However, we continue to have, you know, a, a large number of vacancies, and one of the things that we want to, to do to help reduce those vacancies and attract some additional qualified teachers to Gaston County Schools is to approve a recruitment and retention bonus for new classroom teachers for the upcoming school year. So, the eligibility for this bonus would be, they would have to be newly hired. That means this, this upcoming school year would be their first year with Gaston County Schools. They could come from another school district and still qualify, but they would have to be new to Gaston County Schools for the upcoming school year. We're cutting this off September 15th, because after that point, we don't issue contracts, permanent contracts for teachers, so we just use that date. And we want them to be a classroom teacher, teacher of record for our Gaston County Schools' K-12 students. And that could be a regular classroom teacher, it could be a EC teacher that works for the classrooms as well, and they must be a full-time, permanent employee. And so, what we are proposing is that $1,000 signing bonus, we would pay that in the September, the normal September pay run, which would be September 27th. Those teachers that are EC teachers, K-12, any secondary math or science, and that would be 612, would also get another $1,000, so they would get $2,000 signing bonus. And then, all of these new teachers, they stay through December, the first semester, they would get another $1,000 bonus, just to make sure that they are staying through that whole semester. So, what we are recommending is this new classroom teacher, recruitment and retention bonus, $2,000 for all new classroom teachers, $3,000 for new classroom teachers that are EC, 612 secondary math, and 612 secondary science.
Mr. Hudson, quick question first.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, that, that will be retroactive for anybody that has been already hired for the new school year as well, correct?
As long as they did not work last school year, yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this immediately.
Okay. You got a motion on the floor, second, Ms. Guthrie? Any discussions? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda are superintendent selection process, North Carolina School Board Association. It is an action item, and Sam Thorpe will be coming up. And as the board approved working with North Carolina School Board Association, assist us with our search for a new superintendent. This evening, Sam Thorpe, attorney with the North Carolina School Board Association, is here to help us consider and approve certain documents to move forward in our, in that search. So, thank you for joining us, Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. On behalf of NCSBA, thank you for trusting us to help you with your next search and to help you in finding a new superintendent. Toward that end, I sent you an email a little over a week ago that included some updated initial documents needed to be updated, because obviously, our timeline is not what it was the last time I met with you. I've also brought hard copies of those same documents in folders that I've placed up there for you, if you prefer to look at them in, in hard copy version. But typically, what we do is we start with the timeline, which is on the left side, first document on the left side of your folder, and depending on what you remember from my presentation, the only date that you would be approving is the one highlighted in yellow, the application deadline, which I've set at six weeks. We typically do anywhere between six to eight weeks.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not ready to commit on a, on a start date at this, at this.
Deadline, yeah, deadline, deadline.
I don't know how to fail, but actually, I'm not quite ready to commit on a deadline date.
Why don't we move that date out a little bit? Can we do that? I mean, what's your problem, Mr. Chair?
I'm, I'm just not ready to.
So, what, do you have any thoughts about what you would be?
We have our superintendent.
What?
Well, that's our superintendent. What do you, what's your problem?
I know that. I'm not saying if there's a problem, I'm just not ready to commit on a deadline date yet. I, you know, I haven't, me personally, I've not determined, you know, in my mind, but that's my opinion.
So, Sam, make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
Yes, sir.
Currently, you have, you've had six weeks?
I have six weeks advertised in the timeline, but.
And at, at that point, at six weeks, we obviously would have the ability to release another set of applications, if we so chose to, in terms of another round, if we didn't think we had what we wanted, if, if, would we have options to reopen that application period at some point?
You would. I would encourage you, unless we just had for some, and it would be an obscure reason in a district like this, to have too few applications, I would encourage you to at least, for us to organize the application materials and give you a chance to review them, and look at the actual application materials, and then, assuming you weren't satisfied with the pool, at that point, we could extend it.
So, what, and what would, what was your level of, of too few?
Too few.
Yeah, you said too few applicants, so in your, in your opinion, and I understand it's an opinion.
The lowest I've seen, in six years, the lowest I've seen is 12. And the board, that was a low number. The board, after reviewing the applications, though, was able to find enough that they wanted to interview, and ended up hiring a superintendent with sitting superintendent experience. And I, I think is pleased with their hire, but I mean, I can see where 12 seems like a small number to work with.
And so, through that process of, I'm just making sure we're all, you know, aware of where we can go, after those first rounds of interviews, if, if we're not happy with what we've got, we can start that process again for applications, things of that nature. If none of those 12 suited what we wanted to do, we could, we would not have a problem reissuing those applications and application deadline.
There are a couple of options. One is to repost and, and start the search over, so to speak. The other is to reach out to other applicants that I know of, get some more information from you on what you're not getting in your current applicant pool, and what you're looking for, and to go actively recruit and bring you some additional either resumes or applications. Either of those options would be available, and I've, I've done both.
I mean, it's like, would, would eight weeks be a, a better option for us?
That's perfectly fine. Some have done eight.
See, my question is, and that, and that, what Doc says, I'm worried about, I don't wanna hire a superintendent in, probably never, I mean, we had Mr. Lawes for what, for six months, or kind of contract. I mean, I'd like everything to work out in that timeline. That's, that's my only question.
So, unless you, most, certainly, sitting superintendents and a lot of assistant superintendents have within their contract some sort of notice provision that involves usually 60 to 90 days, sometimes there's 30, but all assistant superintendents and superintendents would want to, to serve out some of that time and close out what they're working on. There's usually a little bit of flexibility, but you always wanna build in, we always build in 30 days to the announcement date, but sometimes, it can be as much as 60, or, or even beyond that, up to 90.
Sam, so, on the average, I know y'all, I looked, I think y'all did 82 counties out of 150 school districts. On average, what is it, six or seven weeks list for a job posting for a superintendent?
So, it used to be eight weeks, six weeks at the, at the lowest all the time, and now, boards have wanted to move faster. And so, we've, the shortest we've done is five weeks, actually, we've done just a shade under five weeks. But I, I would say the average used to be more like seven to eight.
Right.
But now, it's turned, it's, it's become more six, and then now, even five, is that, is that boards are doing, which is why I tried to put it somewhere in the middle.
I was gonna say, if y'all wanna compromise and go to July 31st, that'd be seven weeks, in between six and eight. I'm good with that. Y'all fine with that?
So, you're saying, put the job up next, next Monday?
Who knows?
So, what I've got scheduled to do is put the job up starting tomorrow.
Tomorrow, 13th. Yeah, I'd be same week.
So, having said that, and this is, this is some of my concern, in, in your, in your memorandum to us, you indicated that things need to be in place, you know, the advertising, the, the, the community and staff survey, that we wanna have that in place, and, and I'm taking it that we wanna do this all in tandem.
Ideally.
Ideally, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we still have, you know, quite a few things to go through, and, and then to get an application up online. I know I have some questions as far as what we want to, to see that tailors to our district. I would imagine some other board members have those same kind of questions, and then there's some, some other things that, that me in particular have gone through that, not necessarily one size fits all.
Sure.
And then, you know, one of the questions, and I'm, I'm kinda jumping around, is, is the paid advertising. How did you pick these, are these subscriptions? I know that I get one of these in an email, but are these, are these subscription, periodicals and these websites and so forth that you have to sign up for? Are they, who, who are they specifically going to? What's the, what's the exposure? You know, so, these are kind of questions that I have, that, you know, we can sit here for a couple hours and go through.
That's what I'm here for.
Well.
So, if you have a question, answer it.
Let her finish with what she has.
Yes, I am, I'm just saying, she has question, answer it.
That's my point. I wanna make sure that we are all comfortable and thorough with, with the questions and concerns and comments that we have, so that we make this search the best search that we can make, using your resources. And, and I don't wanna feel like that, and, and not that you're doing this by any means, but that by pushing something out tomorrow, that all of our questions, comments, protocols that we wanna see to tailor this search specifically for Gaston County and what we're looking for are met. And if that takes a couple more days, or a work session in two weeks, then I'm fine with that.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's my opinion.
My understanding was that, that, was that we would look at the documents and finalize them tonight to launch the search tomorrow, but if the board, I serve at the pleasure of the board, and so, if the board needs more time to review the documents, or would like to set aside more time to discuss them, that's, that's entirely up to the board.
And I think that's where I'm going. I mean, I think everybody's reviewed them personally, but we have not discussed them as a group to make sure that we're on the same pages about what we want as a board to present to the public, and, and, and for our wishes to be cohesive.
Right.
And, and may I say, we did have time to look at this document.
Oh, yes.
But have we, as a board, and you are absolutely right, I want it to be customized. It is not customized if you're gonna push it out tomorrow, because it does not reflect inclusivity, and I think that's what we need.
So, does, does it make sense to maybe set aside some time? I, I know a work session was mentioned, where we could, we could have more discussion between the board about what specifically they want, they want to include in the documents, and, and start the search a little bit later?
I think it does.
Obviously, I'll stay here and discuss it, but it sounds like y'all.
So, Mr. Chair and, and board, would it, just a thought, with the application process that, that he's presented, that we have, or, or I guess the, let me back up and say the, the announcement that has been. the, the announcement that has been provided to us, are there things, if there are not things in the announcement that we think we want to adjust, would it be wise of us to go ahead and start allowing those applications to come in while we then pull a work session together to be able to adjust and talk about the survey to the, to the public, a survey to the teachers, and, and come out with that survey, you know, another, another week or two from now, to go ahead and at least allow that application to be out there, to take advantage of maybe some of these summer months, and, you know, using some of the advertising things there, would it be wise of us to, to go ahead and, and let that process go forward? And while you're pondering that, I'll ask Sam a question. So of the board you've worked with in the past, what is the normal scope of the additional? And I understand it's, it's personalized to each board, but in generalized terms, what is the, what is the, the typical use of these additional paid services? Is it one over the other? Is it all? What, what are boards taking advantage of in the?
For the paid advertising?
Correct, the paid advertising.
The only paid advertise, paid place that we recommend advertising is the American Association of School Administrators. And that's because in all of the searches that we've done, we've surveyed our applicant pools in every single search to ask where they found the vacancy. And the vast majority, and by that I mean, like over 80%, it might even be over 90. After adding the most recent searches, they say they found it on AASA. Obviously, some boards choose to not do any advertising. Hurtford County comes to mind as, as one that deliberately chose not to do any advertising and I think is very happy with the, with the superintendent that they found.
Not to cut you off, but any advertising outside of what you normally do?
Any paid advertising. Of course, all the free will do.
Correct.
And then as far as targeted advertising, those are typically folks that really are targeting a specific pool. And it's pretty self-evident which, which pool some of those other paid advertisements target. You know, Wade County would be an example of someone that paid for every single additional option. But that is not something that we recommend.
Right.
And it is entirely up to you where you want to advertise.
So, so back to the board, is, is that something, again, putting that back out there as, as the announcement is currently presented, or with some adjustments tonight?
I definitely don't want to do all of them.
No, but I'm saying using, using all the services that are included, plus the American Association of School Administrators, and at least put that out there to start getting some applications. We're, you know, I guess, I don't, I am absolutely in favor of not being rushed. We've got a solid interim that, that can carry us through. We know for six months, and he's committed to us for an additional six months if we need it. You know, this is an important, probably the most important thing any of us will do serving on this board. But we don't necessarily need to drag our feet either. So would it be wise, again, to, to put that out there? If we're not happy with any of the things that we get, if we're not happy with any of the candidates that come in that first six to seven, eight weeks, and we start looking at it, there's nothing says we can't do it again.
Yeah, we can do.
So just a thought, and I'll, I'll leave that for discussion.
So let me clarify what you're saying, Mr. Chris. You're saying, let's post the job posting and then set a work session this week. So everybody needs to pull up their calendar and let me know when we can do it.
Do we want to have the, and post and report the work session?
No.
We'll wait a couple days. If y'all want to do it, well, we have 48 hours to post meeting.
Right, you would want to do a 48 hour notice before any.
Well, we're going to ask him.
So to, to post it tomorrow, we would not just need to finalize the advertising, but the vacancy and the application. And, and I don't know if the board was feeling comfortable finalizing the application and the vacancy notice as well.
When you say vacancy notice, this is the document you've?
Just behind the timeline.
Correct.
Yes.
So I mean, that, you know, the application, I'm sure, is pretty standard.
Yes.
Standard employment application that, that most of us fill out. I mean, that's, that's not really that hard, right?
There's not a ton of customization.
Correct.
If, if ever is done.
So really, what we need to concentrate on tonight, if we want this to go out, is these two pages, right? We need to make sure we're comfortable with these two pages.
Yep.
And so I guess to Mr. Moore's question, we can wait, and that's fine. But I mean, I don't, you know, if we can get this done tonight, go ahead and open that application process and a notification out, then that gives us time in a work session, whether it be this week or whether it be, you know, whatever, to talk about, again, for me, the surveys to our stakeholders in terms of parents, you know, things like that. I think we need to, to look at and adjust maybe the survey to staff and administrators, to make it a little more customized for them as opposed, because right now, it almost looks almost just like the parent survey. So that, I guess that's where I'm going. That's my thoughts.
I make a motion, we, we move forward. Allow him to, to advertise the vac, for the vacancy. Then we have a work session.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Within the next, sometime this week, first of next week.
Okay.
This is a standard application.
Yeah.
Well, you could do that.
The same is true with the vacancy. What applicants do is they need to know where to go look. The really good ones will go to your district website, to DPI, to look up the, the student performance data and do a deep dive. They'll look at all the minutes of your meetings, they'll go read local news articles, they'll watch your board meetings.
First of all, I got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion?
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, I speak.
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing that I want to do, and I want to make certain that this board remains transparent, I want us to go ahead and post, but it is necessary for us as a board to sit down and to discuss, to customize this position, because it will reflect us and it will reflect what our expectations are for this district. Sure, if you're only going to post, that's fine, with a few little adjustments. But I want to make certain that we have time to discuss what we're looking for and how it will be delivered. We owe that to our community.
I agree with you, but we had this information for two weeks or we can have. I mean, if there's any questions, maybe we should have brought it up.
But we did not do that. And, and I thought with the expectations that we would have had a discussion. That's what I'm saying. So if you want, want to go ahead and publicize, that's fine. But it is necessary for us to have a discussion.
Well, and that's what's on the floor, Ms. Guthrie. So that's the good news. So any other discussion before I call for a vote?
What was the motion? The motion is. To approve the post advertisement for the vacancy and for, for us to have a, a scheduled work session.
Schedule work session.
To figure out exactly, as Ms. Guthrie said.
The surveys?
No, we'll wait on the survey. I think you.
No, no. So we would be figuring out the surveys at the work session, as in you're approving the application, the application deadline, and I need to know the date.
The application deadline, I mean, the week?
Yes, tomorrow.
Were you moving it out to the 31st or?
Deadline is the 24th. Do we want to move that to the 31st or to the?
Yeah, the 31st.
The 31st.
Eight weeks would be August the 7th.
July 31st.
Eight weeks would be another one?
Is that how many weeks?
Yeah, that's very nice.
Yeah, that would be good.
Through eight weeks.
August, is that seven?
I may not be up with Robert's rules of order, but I need to ask this. So we're going to make the motion. Are we going to include within that motion a discussion, a time, a date to discuss how we want to customize? Is that going to be included?
For, for our work session, is that what you said?
Yes, yes.
So it'll be sometime this week or the first part of next week? We have to advertise 48 hours Friday? Is that correct?
Yes.
So.
But that's fine.
So it'd, it'd be sometime this week or first week, second week?
So I, I can do it this week and next week. Does anybody have any problems like a Thursday or?
It'll be our conference.
Yeah.
We just need to make sure we're getting in clear direction.
Right, absolutely.
That's, that's a real important thing. I think what Doc says and what you said, when we get down to what we are looking for, I mean, you know, we, we can put that into our surveys for our parents and, and us and what we're looking for, but overall, we need to put out.
I would also add that typically what boards do. Entirely up to you, of course, but what most boards do is after I've presented the results, and you've had at least a week to review the results from the surveys, from your staff and community, is we create what's called a custom leadership profile, which is informed by the characteristics and types of experience that your staff and community gave you, as well as anything the board wants to add, or specifically, you know, either individually or based on your constituents, you'd like to add into it that you use to review all the applications, interview the candidates, and of course, ultimately decide.
All right, Mr. Chris?
So, Mr. Chair, just, we've got a motion in a second, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Moore, could you possibly amend to add the paid advertising for the American School Board Association, or that, add that additional paid advertising to your motion?
And would you like to do 30 or 60? Since you're, some, some boards are only advertising for five weeks, in which case it doesn't make sense to pay for 60.
Is that extra 240?
It's up, it's up to y'all.
I, whatever is.
I would do eight weeks.
And it sounds like you're advertising through the seventh.
Right.
You're advertising for eight weeks, so 60 days seems like a reasonable option if you want to do it, but it's up to you. You do want to do AASA for 60, okay?
So, so our motion's going to read, we're going to post the advertising for vacancy tomorrow.
Right.
And then we're going to have a work session within the next seven days.
Yep.
The paid advertising for 60 days. Is that, what, what else do you need for us to move forward?
It sounds like you've approved the application deadline, which I'm going to include.
Application deadline would be August.
I'm going to insert that into the vacancy announcement.
August the 7th.
You're taking the application as written, which is what will be hyperlinked, posted and hyperlinked.
Right.
And then after that, it's customizing the community, or it sounds like more the staff survey. Is that your concern?
We'll, we'll work on that work session.
Which we'll set aside next week, I mean, this week, it sounds like.
What's your schedule, Sam, also, so, where we can kind of work in tandem to get this done?
Is there a certain day next week that?
When are we making for vacancy?
She's going to be gone two weeks. So you, are you available this week, sometime later in the week, Thursday or?
Systems are closed on Fridays. We would have to bring in people who would normally be off on Fridays.
That's right, four day week. Well, I was saying Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, Thursday.
If we're posting it, we'll just wait until the deadline.
Thursday or Monday?
Oh, Monday?
Monday.
Monday.
If we're posting.
Please speak loudly so I can hear.
Yeah.
If, if we're posting this, we talked about doing, having a work session on the 10th. And it, it, you know, this is like, one of the goals was to get it posted. Why don't we just have the work session on the 10th?
You're cutting it close because you ain't, you gotta get your survey out to our stakeholders.
Y'all figure it out.
July 10th?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Too far, no.
That's not a word, no.
I tell you what.
July 10th won't work.
Listen, though, and then we'll work on the work session with him later.
Yeah, I won't be here next week.
I don't want to say later. I, I need to know dates because I've got some things. Please, and I'm not going to be rude. I just want to be specific.
Look, this is what we're here for.
I'm going to fly out of here next Thursday on 20th.
Okay.
Can we do this Thursday?
Well, what does Thursday look like for you?
House Thursday with you.
A week Thursday, I can try to make Thursday work.
Is morning or?
Now, what are we going to do in this meeting?
We're going to have a work session to go over the survey questions and customize.
Oh, we're going to have an agenda for that, you're right. It's going to be written out. What things we want to talk about, right?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Thursday, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't see. I actually can't. I'm really sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What about Wednesday?
Post, post.
Would Tuesday next week? Or Monday's a holiday. I didn't, I mean, I'm working.
Tuesday, the 20th, yes.
Yes?
Is that good?
Tuesday next week.
Yeah, the 20th.
So morning, afternoon, morning?
I want to do Tuesday.
Since this is a board, I mean, this is the only way this is going to work.
Well.
Mike could do remotely on Thursday.
That might be good.
That way I don't have to travel, so I could still be.
Yeah, that's fine.
Really?
Yeah, we do that.
Thursday morning, what that would be?
We do a lot of closed sessions with a lot of lawyers on.
Thursday morning.
Team meeting.
If that's okay, I mean, I hate to actually be here in person.
8:30, is that work for everybody?
8:30, Ms. Guthrie?
Can, I hate to ask, can we do that in a later afternoon session? I think just because we, a lot of us are still employed and have things to do at work on a Thursday. So that afternoon would be preferable for me.
What time do you, can you get?
I've got it up until, until I was talking to that for 12 on the app.
Like at 6:00? Can you make it 6:00?
I can make it 6:00.
Okay, that's what he's talking about. 5:30?
Yeah.
5:30?
Works for me.
Thursday at 5:30?
Sure.
Good.
Eric, can you set up where Matt was today?
Ken's office.
Thursday at 5:30.
You can buzz in too, right?
Uh-oh, uh-oh, got a little.
Yeah, Thursday.
Okay.
I got you.
Yeah, she's good.
Oh.
Thursday at 5:30.
For the surveys.
Everyone be able to.
Ms. Cherry can buzz in. She'll buzz in. Her and Sam can hang out together.
So what are we going to have on our agenda, sir? I mean, what, basically?
Well, y'all just toss.
It'll be the community. It sounds like the, the only two documents left to finalize are the community and staff surveys. And it sounds like the staff survey is where change is won. There's at least some desire to customize.
So you all hear what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to customize. All in favor?
Okay.
I want, I want everyone to be clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you state that, restate that?
Hey, 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 if you may, come, come back.
The vacancy posting for tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
In addition to that, we will be having a joint work session.
Thursday?
Thursday at 5:30 to discuss the community and staff input.
Yep.
And then the paid advertising for 60 days. The application deadline is August the 7th.
Right, correct, Mr. Moore. Thank you.
May I throw something in? So the staff, how of the staff, where were that staff input?
Basically, that, that, the surveys, we're going to go over the surveys.
Yeah, we're going to look over the staff and the current stakeholders.
This is so important. We, I don't know, we, we knew that Dr. Booker was going to, we were hoping to have Dr. Booker as our, our superintendent. And we were careful. We went through the process. Jeff, you and I were the only two, I think. And we took our time and we did it the right way. I'm just saying, I'm trying to say rather, we need to take our time.
And do it right.
And do it right.
Absolutely.
Your motion's second.
Yeah, thank you. We are in favor.
We're doing it.
Thank you, Sam.
As soon as everything's live and posted, you'll, you will all get an email from me. We'll figure out how to join via Zoom, or whatever you use. Google me.
Thursday, the 15th at 5:30 is your work session, and we will be working on a notice for that as well.
Right.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
All right.
Hook me up, Eric. You'll have to hook all of us up. It's Zoom.
No, we're, we're coming in.
Oh, we're going to come here.
We're coming here. Ms. Cherry's not going to be here, and Sam's not going to be here.
All right, well, Sam, thank you for waiting a long time. We should have put him up front.
I'll email you tomorrow as soon as the application's live.
Absolutely. And thank you for your time and effort. And we'll see you Thursday on the screen.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure we're not the only board that's asked a thousand questions.
No, ma'am.
We do it right.
And I certainly don't want you to feel rushed at all. I want you to feel like it's thoughtful and deliberate and at the right pace.
Have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I feel confident with you.
Okay, well, we're moving on to a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve those items on consent agenda?
Second.
Second. Mr. Moore, any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. This brings us to time the meeting to hear comments from our superintendent, Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I appreciate the recognition earlier. I wanted to ask Todd Higgins to come forward, please. You know, we have a myriad of events throughout the year, and we come in, and everything is set up, and things happen nice and orderly, and when you go, like we do this time of the year, to about thirty different events, and some of those events we are in charge of, and some of those events other community members are in charge of, you come to appreciate what it takes. Just tonight, if you look at all the individuals here for good news, and we do that once a month and the work that goes on there, and so I just thought we should take a moment and just thank Todd, who his whole staff pitches in to do this, but thank you for what you do to help us run efficiently and have those events where people walk out thinking, this was a well-done and well-received, and I am appreciated as a person, so, thank you for what you've done. And if it didn't make sense, he did not write that, I did that, so, I joked with the principals the other day that for the last ten years, he's had to figure out how to get me to say something to sound intelligent, so it's been challenging. But also, I appreciate your discussion and deliberations. You know, I want nothing but best for the system. I have lived in Gaston County since nineteen eighty-nine, and this is an important part for me, and so I believe that Dr. Laws will come in and pick up and move us in the right direction. You know, and it really speaks to watching fifteen different graduation ceremonies and two thousand students come across and get their diplomas, and literally millions of dollars. At our principal's meeting, one of the principals stood up and said that they alone had fourteen million dollars of scholarships with their graduating seniors. So, you start replicating that out on other schools, it's impressive. As Ms. McGraw just mentioned, we are in our summer work schedule, so our folks are working ten-hour days, Monday through Thursday, so that they can enjoy an extended break through the weekend, and that is effective all the way through July twenty-eighth. There are a number of summer activities going on. Today, we started summer projects at various schools with them out of things, that renovations, life safety issues have all begun in earnest today. Many of you have seen the work at Greer Middle School and the beginning of that project that started several weeks ago. We also have Commissioner's School of Excellence is underway, and will conclude this Thursday, and it has been going on since we got out of school. And all the enrichment camps that are offered throughout, that Ms. Calmia talked about how she's supporting them with food, all this will go up until August third, and so just want everybody to realize that the school system doesn't pause in the summer. Would encourage everyone in the community to be talking to parents with five and six-year-olds. We are in the thrust of enrollment and still looking for kindergarten enrollment, so they can register online, and we really, it helps us for planning, so we encourage everyone to do that now, for allow us for allotting teachers for all those things that can go on. And, Mr. Chairman, that is the last time as superintendent, I will say to you, that completes my report for this evening, but we do need a closed session.
Okay, and mine will be short and sweet, too, hopefully. As we close our meeting, I hope y'all are already enjoying summer and the four-day week over here and our staff. We do have exciting things happening in our school during the summer for continuing to educate children, professional development of our adults, cleanup, and a lot of construction at the facility, Dr. Hushar, we hope you're much proud of. We're grateful to our teachers, administrator, bus drivers, cafeteria staff, school staff, and everyone who worked to make this great year for our students. As we close, let's thank Superintendent Booker again for his dedication, devotion, hard work to make Gaston County School the success that it is. Thank you for your leadership for over ten years, or four, nine and a half years. We wish you continued success. Also, we typically do not have July meetings, but we may need to call a meeting at some point to, to continue our discussion for search for our next superintendent. So, I need a motion to go into closed session. Ms. Cherry?
I make a motion that we go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three eighteen dot eleven A three and six for consultation with attorney and personnel.
I make any second. Mr. Chris, all in favor? We're in closed session. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Booker?
Members of the board, we have one administrative appointment, please. Would recommend William Benson Jr. for an assistant principal contract for two years, which would end on June 30th, 2025, beginning July 1 of 2023.
Do you have a motion on the floor? A.M. Stevens, any second?
Second.
Mr. Kinlaw, all in favor?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chris?
Ms. Chair, make a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Benson, all in favor? Thank you for your time tonight. We're adjourned.